This meeting is called to order. This meeting is taking place at the Sussex County Administrator on February 8th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Commissioner Room on One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey. No call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
I would like to have a moment of silence for Eunice Wong for. She was a councilwoman who passed. She was shot in front of her house in Sarvo. So if we could get a moment of silence and a flag salute. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four is our public statement. Pursuant to Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, added with notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail in email. Such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star-Ledger, WS, US Radio, WNNJ Radio. It is also posted on the bulletin board, maintaining an administrative center for public announcement, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is approval of agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Proclamation, certifications, and presentation. We have two. One is American Heart Month and Wear Red Day. Have a proclamation?
Yes, that's going to be, it's my understanding, it's going to be approved tonight but presented under later date.
Okay.
By the Department of Health and Human Services.
We should get a motion for that now.
Mm-hmm.
Can I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion Commissioner Yardley, second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Our next is Planet Network Presentation, and they are here tonight, which I'm very happy about. If you guys want to step forward and give us your presentation.
You could just switch the microphone, the direction of the microphone.
Oh, I wasn't sure which one.
Just make sure. Thank you. It's for recording.
It's not for safety.
No, no, no.
It's going to record, yeah.
Excuse me, before you start?
Yes.
I just noticed that the Health Department staff is here. Were they, was the intent for them to say something to the Board? Is that, yes, no?
Yes.
So they, so if we could bring them back up?
Okay, well, why don't we go with your presentation since you're standing ready, and then we'll bring them back up.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
So, I'm Robert Boyle. I'm the owner and founder of Planet Networks. Just kind of wanted to give you guys a little update on what's happening in the county and just to kind of give everyone where we are. So we've been deploying fiber around Sussex County, as you guys know, or may or may not know, for almost four years now. And we have, we continue to accelerate. So in the beginning, it was very slow, and now we're rolling at a much, much faster pace. And we are kind of on track. We're not exactly sure, but probably by the end of next year, to have service to every address in Sussex County. So it's a, it's a big, big lift. So the thing, a lot of times people say, oh, well, it's taking a long time. The phone companies started in the 1800s, you know, we, we, you know, the cable companies started building their network in the 70s, and you know, we started four years ago. So it's a, it takes a long time. We, we have service to, we have a couple more addresses to do in Newton, a couple more, like multifamily dwellings that we haven't gotten permission from the owners yet to get into, but we have fiber in front. But Newton has service available to pretty much every single address now. We will be done with all of Freedon sometime, probably around the end of April. We have serviced a lot, large parts of Hampton, probably about three, half to three quarters of Sparta. Andover Borough has serviced every single address. Andover Township is about 60 to 70% done. We have service in Frankfurt, we have Franklin, we should have serviced every single address by the end of April, May, depending on, you know, the total rollout. So we have, let's see where else. We're going to be building up 206 to some of the lakes up there. We have, we have service in Wantage. Sussex will be done sometime this spring, early summer. We are deploying, let's see where else we have, we're going to get Hamburg and Augsburg done soon. We have, let's see, Green, everything above ground there should be done in a couple weeks. We have Stillwater is getting done. So we're, we're doing a lot of work on a lot of fronts. Byram is in process, so we're, everything in Byram that's CenturyLink is done. So all of Forest Lakes is done. Verizon, it's a different permitting process. When I say permitting, it's not permitting like everyone thinks of, like you go to Town Hall and get a permit. It's permitting from the, the people own the poles, so the poles are owned by Verizon or CenturyLink, now Brightspeed or the power company. So we have to ask them for permission to attach. By law, they have to give us access, but they don't have to make it easy. So it, it takes a little bit of time, and so there's a process. So that's happening. So in Byram and Lake Tranquility and Green, they're both Verizon territory. And some of the other areas in, like, let's see what else. Well, that's all Byram. So everything kind of south of Andover Borough that's not Forest Lakes is Verizon. That's all in the process of being permitted. So that'll all be done later this year. Let's see what else. I'm trying to think, we're down, no, that's Morris County, Warren County. I'm trying to think of any other areas in Sussex County I haven't had. So Vernon is its own special preacher, and we're kind of holding off on Vernon for now until some particular things there get resolved. And then, once those are resolved, then we'll do more work up there. Let's see what else. We, we provide service to lots of businesses, homes, and we, one of the things that sets us apart is we don't, we don't charge anything for people to hook up. So if somebody has a driveway that's a half mile long, then we'll run the fiber down, and there's no additional charge or anything. And we have very competitive prices, super reliable network, everything's brand new, it's all fiber, fast uploads, fast downloads. I'm not saying it's advertising, just kind of like talking about the differentiation of what, what's different about our services. Everything's local here. We, we, we're all local here in Sussex County. Everyone who works for us, for the most part, is, is local. We live and work in the community, and we're now 104 employees. I heard another person today, so 105 maybe, so. And we're expecting to double that before the end of the year, so. Yeah, and we're, we have warehouses in Green. We have, is that Frankfurt? The sales and marketing offices in Frankfurt? Augusta, so I was in Frankfurt, but yeah. We're here in Newton. Our shop is over on the other side of Newton, and we, we own property in Green and in Andover and in Sparta and a lot of other places. So we're very involved and entrenched in Sussex County. We're also building outside of here, we're building in Hudson Valley, we're building in eastern Pennsylvania, we're building down in South Jersey as well now, so. Sussex County's home, and we're making sure that we take care of everybody here first before we go too far astray. And just one, the, the county has been great, and we, we work, so whenever we work on roads, we have to get permission to the right of way. We get permission in each individual municipality, so we've already done that, and every municipality in Sussex County has already given us permission, with the exception of Walpak, because it's all state land, and there's like eight people there, so nobody wants to pay $30,000 to, you know, a year for service, because they, it's ridiculous. They all have Starlink or Cellular or something, I guess, so. That's the only place in Sussex County we're not building. The, the other thing is the county roads, we have permission, so we work with the County Road Department, and we, there's a form they have us fill out, and that's, they're great to work with, and we, you know, we have a good working relationship with them. And then New Jersey DOT for any state roads, and we work with DOT to do stuff on state roads. And so there's no, I don't really have any ask or anything for you guys, like, there's, there's nothing that is a problem in the county that's impeding our progress, that's making it, you know, take longer, or any, any obstacles or barriers that we need to say, hey, if you guys can fix this, we'll go faster. Everything is, everything's good, and just trying to give you guys an update on kind of where we are and what's happening, and happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I just have one question. So as I was talking to you guys earlier, I was at the Frankfurt Township meeting yesterday, and Altis came, who owns Optimum, and they were basically promising everything that they promised me when I was mayor there, which never came to fruition. So just for the audience's knowledge, if you guys run everything, do we have the option to go with you, or we're not locked in with them? It's kind of like basically open for?
Yeah, and that's, that's a great question. So a lot of, a lot of people, especially in social media, people say, oh, my town, they have a contract with, with Optimum, and they, they're not letting competition in or whatever. That's not the case. There's no, it's, it's illegal to have any kind of monopoly in New Jersey. You can't have exclusive agreements at all, and no towns can have it, the county can't have it. Anyone who wants to is free to build an area. However, you do have kind of natural monopolies. So if the cable company, you know, they're, you know, you have to cry for them, and it's not like they're, you know, losing lots of money, but if another cable company were to build over them, and you had two cable companies offering the same service, you know, cable TV and with the, the coax and the maintenance of their plant and everything, neither one of those companies would make money, and they probably, you know, one of them would go bankrupt, and the other one would probably wind up buying. So you do have kind of a natural monopoly in cable because of just the, the cost to build it, and that's not a, it's not a really high profit margin service, and it's very expensive, and cable prices keep going up. That's mostly the content providers who keep charging more to the cable company. The cable company on TV, they, they don't make a lot of money. They make maybe five or $10 a month or something per customer. So the internet is the thing that they make money on. When we build, we, our whole network's all about the internet, and that's the thing, and it's a much more reliable network, because it's new, and it's not, doesn't use copper and electricity, it uses light. So the lifetime for it is longer and everything, so there, there's technical reasons why our operational cost is lower, but we can justify the cost of building because we get a lot of customers every time we build somewhere. And so, you know, overbuilding with fiber makes sense for the first person who does it. For a second or third person to come in and overbuild with fiber, the economics don't really make sense, just like someone overbuilding with, you know, coax doesn't really make sense. So a lot of times people say, hey, you know, if, you know, why, you know, our, whoever, our town council doesn't want a choice, it's not that they don't want a choice, or like, people say, oh, we're begging Verizon to come here to bring FiOS. Verizon isn't in these areas in Sussex County, there's a particular area, they are in the Verizon areas, they're not in the CenturyLink or now Brightspeed areas. And so Verizon's not going to overbuild their, you know, adjacent phone company. So when we're done building, and today, today you have two choices. You have Brightspeed for most of the county, or if you're in the southern parts of the county in Byram, or in, in, in Lake Tranquility, or, you know, that's, yeah, Lake Tranquility is the only other place that's, that's Verizon. You have the choice of DSL from those companies, or you can get cable. Once we build, then you'll have fiber, cable, or DSL. Today, we offer internet service, and we offer phone service. We don't have a TV solution yet, but we're actually working on that, so we'll have our own, you know, Planet TV offering soon. But in the meantime, people can stream, there's tons of streaming options. Most people don't have cable today anyway, most people stream and, you know, watch YouTube TV or Hulu or, you know, whatever else. And you can get all the live channels that people are used to, you can get Channel 2 and 4 and, you know, 5 and whatever else. So, you know, having, having that streaming option, you have lots of different choices, and if you don't like it, then you cancel it and use somebody else, because there's, you know, 40 different, maybe 30 or 40 different streaming options. At least 10 of them are basically equivalent to cable for less money. So when we're done, people will have the choice of using us. We don't have any contracts or anything, there's no long-term lock-in of any kind. So people can use us, or they can use cable, or they can use cable if they wanted to, they can use cable for their TV, and use us for internet. It'd be kind of silly, because you're paying a premium for the TV, but, you know, you could do it, or you could, you know, use us for phone and cable for, you know, TV and internet or whatever. I mean, that's, you have choices. And so at the end of the day, what we're doing is we're bringing choices to Sussex County, and we're bringing, you know, a really good choice that most people in the rest of the country don't have. So our speed tests are in the top 1% of all of New Jersey and, and all of the country in terms of, you know, looking at the data now. You know, the company that does it, you know, they'll, they'll tell us what that is, but if we want to use it in marketing, it's like $20,000 a month to make those claims. But they'll give you the data and tell you, yeah, hey, you're in the top 1%, but if you want to use it, they charge you for it. So we don't, we don't, we don't claim that anywhere, because, you know, that's an expensive thing, but we know from their data, you know, that we are one of the fastest providers in the country. So that's, and that's available here now, and it's transformative for a lot of people. So people who are going to have to, especially during the pandemic, have to sell their, and now there's so much remote work, people are going to have to sell their house or move away somewhere because they can't get a good internet, and they work remotely now because their company doesn't have an office anymore. Or businesses that were trying to do things where they're trying to upload files and deal with things, and they don't have a good connection, they're going to move their office to somewhere else, they're going to move to Morris County somewhere, and now they don't have to do that, now they can keep their business here. And so, and other things, people are looking to establish business or looking to move, and they can move to Sussex County, because now we have better connectivity than most of the other counties around, and that's, that's huge. And that, by the end of, I think so by the end of next year, our hope is that every single address in, I'll say hope, it's a, we have a plan, it's not just hope, but there's a plan to get there. It's just, you know, as long as everything goes according to plan, and we don't have any, you know, unforeseen delays, then by the end of next year, we should have service to everyone in Sussex County, so.
Perfect. Is there any other commissioner that has any questions? Sarah, what are you doing here?
I'm here to high five everybody. I'm the Senior Sales Manager, Jeremy Versio. I know some of you pretty well at this point, but, but obviously, I'm, I'm here for Sussex County, I live in Long Island, and I'm proud to be part of the company and to be moving to help serve this county better than it ever has been before, so.
And I get to coach his son at basketball.
He's got much better with your help.
And so that brings up, if I can just talk for one more minute, just, we, we were founded here in, in Newton. I remember when I was like, you know, 19 registering the business with the clerk right there, when I was, which is now our headquarters ironically, so. And so, you know, we were based here in Sussex County, we've been here, and we're, you know, we were the first ones to offer local dial-up all over Sussex County. We're the first ones with DSL back in 1997. The thing everyone else is still selling today, we stopped selling in 2000. So, you know, it's, and then we got out of that business and focused on cloud services and hosting and stuff, but four years ago, we started again, bringing connectivity, and we wanted to do it before that, but the, the laws weren't really great for allowing other phone companies to get on the poles. Over the past few years, they've really changed a lot of that and made it a lot easier, so. We're happy to be here, and thank you guys for all your support, and thanks for having a, you know, and people complain a lot about New Jersey, about a lot of the laws and regulations and stuff, but I have to say, after doing business in Pennsylvania and New York, the telecommunications stuff in New Jersey is really not so bad. It's actually pretty good, and the DOT here is not so bad either, compared to New York State especially. So, you know, it's, everyone likes to, you know, say bad things about, you know, so, you know, so much regulation, so bad, really, like up to telecommunications, New Jersey has gotten the regulations pretty good, so. As far as allowing competition, which is a good thing, so.
So if you guys could be so kind as to follow up with our new director by T. Jeff, and collaborate on what we talked about earlier, I'd really appreciate it.
No, absolutely, I'd be happy to do that, so.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Commissioner, if I could just ask one question. Mr. Boyle?
Sure.
I had attended this symposium at the high school a few years back, at the University of CenturyLink, and I know at that time you were constrained from a cost perspective because of permitting and right-of-way licensing, they were paying to either CenturyLink basically now. Those constraints now kind of dissipated, where it's more of a convenient permission, or it's still a costly initiative to bring all of it down?
It's insanely expensive. My budget, starting in April, is $5 million a month that we're spending, so. It's insanely expensive.
Yeah, so you still rely on density of customer base in certain areas to make it of cost-effective?
Yes, so what we do is we'll, we'll build out the more dense areas first, so we'll build out, like, first thing we build out is like Newton, Lake Mohawk, you know, we built out, you know, Paul and Skill, we built out Lake Nepal and Forest Lakes. We build the high-density communities first. Doesn't mean we don't want to do the, the low-density communities, because we do, and we hit those, and we are in the process of building out lots of those areas. Like right now, every day, we have people down in Nolton rolling out fiber. We've got roads that are, you know, six miles long that have 12 people on them. But, you know, so we're doing those areas, so we're not neglecting them, but at the same time, if we just did the rural areas, you know, we'd go out of business. So we use the high-density areas to support the, the lower-density areas, but we're, we're building all of them. It's just it's a very, it's a very expensive, time-consuming process, and it takes a long time, so.
I know, well, yeah.
But it's, you know, we're, we're doing it, and we're building it, and luckily, right now, the, you know, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of investor interest in this space, and so, you know, we're, and the banks and other financial institutions are willing to lend money for it, so we're, we're able to continue building and growing very quickly, so.
Great, well, I wish you great success, and I look forward to continuing my conversations I've met with Jeremy and some other people on your team, so. Thanks, you're great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again. Herb, just to clarify, so you're saying the Health Department wants to come up, and?
I see that we have the staff to, do you folks want to come up?
Hello, I'm Nikki, and this is Danielle. We're both field representatives at the Office of Public Health Nursing. So this month is Heart Health Awareness Month. Heart disease is the leading cause of death for men, women, and people of most racial and ethnic groups in the United States, with one person dying every 34 seconds from cardiovascular disease. Along with that, 697,000 people in the United States died from heart disease in 2020, which is one in every five deaths. Our mission as the Office of Public Health Nursing is to educate the community by heart health. By doing that, Danielle and I have been scheduling outreaches with senior centers to give heart health presentations, along with playing Heart Health Jeopardy, and we are targeting the older population, which is our goal, because the fact that aging can cause changes in the heart and blood vessels that may increase a person's risk of developing cardiovascular disease. So, yep, so we just wanted to talk about what we were doing, and how it's important for the older people to know about heart disease.
Old people?
Older.
Could have just looked at me, I guess, you know. I was waiting for that.
But you were the first one to respond.
Guilty counsel, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks.
Yeah, you want to?
I, I.
I think we should.
I think, sir, if somebody?
Jennifer, could you come up for a minute? Yeah, you, Jennifer. Don't turn too red. No, Counsel, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Sotento, if you haven't known her before, but it's very little time that we get to compliment an employee who passed the health officer's test the first time around.
That's great.
And that doesn't happen in the state of New Jersey, I can tell you that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, number sevens are public hearing. This is the final adoption of a resolution. At a regular meeting held on January 25th, 2023, we introduced for first reading the following resolution, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of January 31st, 2023, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. This resolution is authorizing cap to limit county budget appropriation increase in 2023 county budget to 3.5% over the previous year's final appropriations, subject to certain exceptions, and to establish an appropriation, appropriation cap bank. And I'm going to have Ron, for the people who don't understand that, kind of discuss this, so everybody understands.
Sure, this is an annual requirement from the state of New Jersey that tells counties and municipalities that they have to put this in as an approval, so that if something happens in an emergent condition in a year, we have monies to go, that we can use that was outside the scope of the budget, that if we get in an emergent condition, we're not held without having to react to that. And that's basically what this is all about, we have to do it annually. And it's not that the taxes are going to go up 3.5%, that's not it at all. This gives us the ability to use emergent monies if it does come. God knows, although we don't have to, but this gives us the ability to do it.
Thank you. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
I'll make it.
Commissioner Yardley, can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Pass. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this resolution? Seeing none, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Second.
Second, or, uh, Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Staying? Pass. All right, now I need a motion that this resolution be finally adopted.
So moved.
Commissioner Space?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Hayden? Any discussion? All right, no call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Aye.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner, Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, motion to authorize the clerk to be, to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and is also posted saying on a bulletin board and lobby for the County Administration Center. Can I get a voice, voice vote for that, please?
Motion, motion to?
Motion?
Motion, yeah.
Motion, yes, to authorize. A motion, please?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Pass. Number eight is public session from the floor. This public session is, is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up with a microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. A motion to open the floor to the public.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Pass. Is there anyone out there that has a comment for agenda items only? There's a regular public session at the end of the meeting, this is just items specifically listed on the agenda. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the floor to the public?
I'll make it.
Commissioner Yardley, can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Pass. Number nine is commissioners' comments. We will start with Commissioner Hayden.
Disputing our information offered tonight, nothing to report back. Keep it simple, quick.[1704.55] quick.
Commissioner Space, you want to go?
Uh, Division of Social Services Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Food Stamp Program. Throughout the pandemic, food stamp SNAP recipients were temporarily receiving extra emergency allotments, which provided them with the maximum allowable benefits. This temporary emergency assistance will be ending on February 28th, 2023. Individuals will be redetermined based on their actual income and their food stamp benefits will be adjusted accordingly. The state will be sending out letters to all recipients. The Division of Social Services has been notifying affected Sussex County residents as well. SNAP recipients can check their benefit detail at any time online at NJFamiliesFirst.com or by calling 800-997-3333. Recipients can visit NJ211.org to learn about other available resources. Residents who need further assistance or those who would like to utilize the food pantry at the Division of Social Services can call 973-383-3600 or visit the agency at 83 Spring Street in Newton during its hours of operation on Monday through Friday from 8:30 until 4:30. Division of Senior Services Volunteer, Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, VITA. The Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, which is provided through Norwest Cap, offers free tax help for low to moderate income individuals and families, including young adults, senior citizens, persons with disabilities, and those with limited English. VITA will be available at two locations in Sussex County, beginning the first full week of February 2023 by appointment only. At the Christ Church Pathways, 17 Church Street in Newton, Tuesdays 9 to 12, starting February 7. And at the Sussex County Cultural Center, 31 Main Street in Sussex, Thursdays 11 to 1, starting February 9. To schedule an appointment, call 973-784-4900, extension 2902, or visit vita.unitedwaynjnnj.org backslash index dot P H P. Thank you.
Done?
Done.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Okay, I'm going to start out with, um, the health department update. Again, vaccinations continue to be available. The Sussex County Division of Health offers the COVID-19 vaccinations if you are interested. Uh, it will be offered at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg on Wednesday, February 22nd, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. You can complete your consent form in advance. You can visit the Sussex County website, sussex nj.us. Excuse me. Also, public health nursing continues to provide weekly homebound vaccinations. For those interested and free at-home COVID-19 test kits, continue to be offered through the County of Sussex and Vault Medical Services. Um, where we are at right now with COVID in the county, we are a median level of activity, coded yellow. For the past week, we've been reporting an average of 28 cases per day. Hospitalizations have been the big question. Each of these meetings, I report that. In January, we've had 64 hospitalizations of county residents. To give you a comparison, December 66, November 42, October 82, so always under 100, somewhere's in that same range. Uh, and then I had asked at the start of the year to please update us on flu and RSV, because as we know, during the COVID pandemic, it seemed flu miraculously disappeared from public view. So I asked to see where we were kind of at with that as flu started making a reemergence. So you are aware, um, we are considered at a moderate level for influenza at this time. Last year at this time, we were also considered a moderate level. Two years ago in 2020 into 2021, we were considered low, nearly nonexistent for flu. Um, New Jersey's long-term care facilities related to flu-like illnesses is higher than last year. Also, our emergency room visits related to flu are higher, nearly two percentage points than last year. However, our school absenteeism rate is spiking up a bit, and now we see that the kids are back in school. It doesn't seem to be spreading like wildfire through the schools anymore. Uh, just to give you a reference, in New Jersey, there's been four confirmed flu pediatric deaths and 70 severe pediatric cases of flu. In the state of New Jersey, we've carefully been watching the RSV outbreaks as well, uh, that have gone really affected infants and, uh, and young children. But what the great news for tonight is that as of January 31st, 2023, we have zero RSV outbreaks in schools, daycares, and long-term care facilities. We also have zero influenza A outbreaks in schools and long-term care facilities. So it's definitely, uh, coming under control. So that is actually very, very good news to share, uh, with everyone tonight. Um, moving on to the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Festival, I've had a couple of meetings with, uh, the folks there. And last night, we did have a meeting where we discussed a multitude of options that would be available to them. Um, SCARC here in Sussex County has reached out to the Arts and Heritage Council, and they've asked them for some programming, uh, for some of their residents at that facility. Also, Arts and Heritage has been very, very active in trying to reach the more rural areas of the community. Uh, with COVID, we, we didn't much think about this, but the arts seriously took a hit. Uh, they were not able to host their annual food truck fundraiser, which is huge for them. They weren't able to open the gallery. They weren't able to do their art shows. There were so many things that created a stream of income for the Arts and Heritage Council that they were not able to do, yet still they plowed forward. Still, they're, uh, giving grants, you know, to arts groups here in, uh, in the county. So we, you know, we definitely had quite a long talk about what that looks like. I did make them aware of the small business grant opportunity. However, I do not know with their status, if they're actually able to take advantage of that or not. That's a question for Elka and, and Ron. But regardless, they did have, um, you know, a couple asks regarding ARCA, if anything could fit within those, those parameters for some of those projects, especially for rural and underserved and for, uh, the residents of SCARC. So that's a further conversation I'd like to have with Christina, with you, and with Ron, and then to present to the board. Um, they're going to put something together for me prior to February 20th, when I have my meeting with Ron and Elka, to go over some of the budget. And I would like to really, you know, explore it a little bit then and see where we're at when we meet on the 20th.
Ron and I have already had some initial discussions. So then, once we get that information, we can continue from there.
That's perfect. Thank you very much. But I have to say, those folks work hard and they ask for nothing. I've been on this board for five years and they smile and everything that they get, they're grateful for. Um, the, the gallery on Spring Street is beautiful. And, you know, it's staffed by a lot of volunteers for their gallery hours. And I just wanted to extend the invitation, um, this Saturday evening, um, at 7:00 PM, there's going to be the award ceremony for their Exposed Regional Jury Photography exhibit. So people have been bringing in their, their photography to be displayed. Opening night is Friday night. Saturday night, we're doing a little reception at 6:30. They give the awards at 7:00. I'll be there. But, uh, if anybody's interested in attending that, the gallery's on Spring Street, and it's all local work. And, uh, it's really great. So I'll keep you posted as to what's happening with, um, with the Arts and Heritage Council, but they're super active. Um, just to give you a couple, uh, other little updates that I think are important. We all know, uh, one of the main conversations that we were having back in the fall was, uh, the situation with the bear hunt or lack thereof, uh, the governor's last-minute 11th-hour authorization, all of the back and forth that happened with that. Just so you're aware, uh, yesterday at 10:00 AM, there was a meeting held by the New Jersey Fish and Game Council that actually looked to extend, uh, because we have the temporary bear hunt, those 10 days and actually one and a half days that's taken away from that bear hunt. But actually, they accepted public comments about whether or not the bear hunt would, would again be renewed in the comprehensive black bear management policy that did receive some updates this year from the Fish and Game Council would be adopted. So we expect a decision to come soon. Uh, there were people present on, you know, both sides of the aisle. Uh, we, this board has always been of the belief that education, but paired with, you know, with a controlled hunt, was absolutely necessary to control the numbers that were exploding. And we were actually quite loud about it. And, uh, hopefully, the Fish and Game Council will move in the direction of adopting this for an extended period of time, um, following the temporary measure that, that had taken place. Um, there are a couple, uh, couple updates that came out of Trenton that also I would like to share. And please excuse me, when they talk about COVID and respiratory, over a month ago, I was done with COVID and it is just a cough that I didn't want to let go. So I don't know, I, I had the fluorona. I had the, the double hit. So I guess maybe that's why I get double the fun right now. But please excuse my coughing every two seconds as, uh, as I'm trying to talk here. Um, so, uh, one thing I wanted to update you with is something new, and I hope the state acts on this. It's actually not new, it's resurrected. And what that is, is, um, being able to retain teachers, first of all, uh, effective teachers. We do have the inability to hire teachers that do not live in the state of New Jersey. And it's not just in the teaching field, uh, it's actually state employees. And, um, it, it's a bill that actually ends state employee residency requirements. Um, the, uh, this is one of those odd times where groups all across the board seem to be in agreement, specifically in education. So where you might have the charter school, the charter school, uh, choice sector, the NJEA, everybody and their brother is saying, we are losing quality educators right across the border in New York and Pennsylvania, who are willing to teach in the state of New Jersey, but must maintain a residency in the state of New Jersey, and they can only work for us for a year. And then without a special exemption, they can no longer work for us. This has been the bane of our existence for years and years, and we're losing, you know, quality teachers who would love to work here in New Jersey, simply cannot. So, uh, Bill A148, sponsored by Assemblyman Worthes and, and Space, and, and especially Assemblyman Space, uh, I'm sorry, Assemblyman Worthes, let's think about this. When he was the Commissioner of Labor, he himself saw firsthand, you know, the devastation that something like this would, would cause. I mean, you had family members perhaps who had to take care of a sick relative that lived right across the border, that they simply couldn't have residency here in this state, and they were not able to keep their, keep their jobs. So we're hopeful that this does become, uh, an issue where there is strong bipartisan support to actually eliminate that requirement when there is a labor shortage. I understand why this was put in place back in 2011, when the idea was protect jobs, New Jersey residents first in line for New Jersey jobs, is how it should be. However, with such a stark labor shortage that only seems to be worsening, it seems now is really high time to reverse that. So, I myself, I definitely support this, uh, coming out of, um, coming out of District 24 from the assembly. Um, also, I did want to share with you another piece of legislation, Senator O'Roh's bill, S757, is very good news. Um, and that is for, uh, farmland preservation program. If you happen to own a piece of property or a piece of land, um, this will authorize special social events at certain farms or preserve farmlands. So these types of events could be weddings, music, milestone events, or other cultural or social gatherings. And, uh, the number of special occasion events that can be held would be limited based on the economic output of the farm. So depending if you're a commercial farm, a smaller farm that puts out maybe $10,000, uh, per year. Um, so if you are a, a, a farm that produces agricultural or horticultural products worth between $10,000 and $100,000 annually, you can hold up to a maximum of 15 events per year. And a farm that produces over $100,000 or more can hold a maximum up to 26 events per year. So it's just another way to be able to stream some income. Uh, we often talk about how we want to keep our area up here beautiful and preserved, but this is a way to actually increase a potential revenue stream. You know, many people would like to hold their special events, their weddings on different farms. And I mean, it's, you, you can't beat the beautiful areas up here. And to be able to offer that, uh, as a stream of income while preserving the natural beauty of our area, I think is, is a home run. And that bill was actually signed into law. That's not pending like the one prior. So those are the updates, uh, from District 24 that directly affect us. And, uh, I'll keep you, keep you posted.
Thank you very much. Deputy Director Yardley?
Thank you. Um, from the Division of Health, there'll be a women's clinic held on Thursday, February 16th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, uh, Wheatsworth Road. Uh, you can make an appointment by calling 973-579-0570. Um, so also from the Division of Senior Services, Sussex County Community College opened a computer lab. As we mentioned earlier, about, you know, the old people. Sussex County Community, oh, as an open computer lab that, this is pretty interesting because the open computer lab at Sussex County, uh, is available, um, free to, uh, Sussex County, uh, seniors and to enhance their computer skills as well as to ask the questions about your cell phones. And everybody knows that if you're not four years old, you don't know how to use, uh, the TV control and the cell phone and the computer. But I think this is great. Um, you can bring your iPads and computers, um, they'll be able to help you with that. So for additional information, the Division of Senior Services, uh, is handling that. You just contact Senior Services. Um, just a couple of things from the Association of Counties. They're working, and this has been a work in progress for many years, uh, they're working at civil service reform to streamline the system so it's not redundant with laws that are in place. What does that mean? What that means is they're trying to get it so that it's, the regulations are simple to understand. Um, the regulations that we're using have been in effect 40, 50 years, I don't know. And sometimes there's conflicting, you know, conflicting regulations. We say you can do this, and then another section says you can't. So that's a, a, a kind of a work, uh, in progress. Um, there's some, uh, grants, uh, where you're looking, uh, just like the service for, um, prosecutors and the courts. There's one now for construction code inspections, and there's about a $400,000 grant, if anybody's, uh, interested in that. And then there's, there was, I just want to announce that there was a, uh, a summit on human traffic, uh, trafficking this past December. Uh, it's the first in a series, uh, series of three, uh, virtual workshops, uh, that the, uh, New Jersey Association of Counties will hold. Um, there, they had one domestic minor human trafficking prevention. Um, there's going to be a summary, uh, that you'll be able to log on on their site. You'll have to register, and that will be, um, by email. And then the Office of, the New Jersey State Office of Information Privacy, there's now a Office of Information Privacy, and, uh, it's dedicated to Daniel's Law. And if you go on the site, you can find out everything you need to know about Daniel's Law. And that's on the New Jersey site. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. I'll be brief myself. Uh, I am happy to announce that on tonight's agenda, the county is voting on a resolution to award the first round of small business grant recipients. This was a project that was very important to the board in 2022, and I am beyond thrilled to finally get this to the final stage. Uh, this is some ARCA money that we allotted, uh, $2.5 million to small businesses through the county. And we've, uh, in about, I don't know, 30 right now applicants. Um, so actually, we're going to start hand-delivering those checks of $15,000 to our local businesses, which we're very, very happy to do. Um, if you know anybody that's applicable, please let them know and, you know, get that ball rolling because it will be first come, first served, uh, when the money runs out. And, you know, I guess we'll revisit it at the time, but the sooner the better. We like handing out checks. Um, I have a mayor's luncheon, Herb and I, Deputy Director, um, have it scheduled for the, the 17th to discuss current events throughout the county. We'll have the mayors there, the council presidents there. Try to keep, uh, a little closer relationship, uh, with your municipalities and, and ourselves. And we'll try to do that again by mid-year. That's about all I have for tonight. I do want to always thank you, thank the DPW for the work they do in the storms, whatnot, even though it's not so much plowing, uh, as well as the fleet garage, Mr. Dixon, you guys, I know you're always, we're there under the trucks, whether it's ice, whether it's, it's standing, salting, grinding, whatever we do. Appreciate that. You know, that's what people see. That's how they get to work when we maintain our roads. We're lucky so far. We haven't had any snow. Worked well for me, so. And that's all I have. Um, number 10 is approval of the consent agenda.
There is no consent agenda.
Right. Now we have no consent agenda. Number 11, approval of minutes. Uh, just one note, uh, reorganization meeting was tabled. So now we're just going to bring that back up. So that was from January 4th, 2023, uh, regular meeting, January 25th, 2023, and executive session, January 25th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meetings?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, Second Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Pass. Number 12, appointments and resignation. We have one. Uh, that's an appointment of Lisa Chaimings as chairperson and Mike Dolan as vice chairperson for Sussex County Open Space Advisory Committee for 2023. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Commissioner Yardley?
Second.
Second Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Pass. Number 13 is our resolutions. We have A through I. I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through I.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Next is our awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the Sussex, of the County of Sussex has renewed the award of contract change orders, bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determine that adoption of the set resolutions is and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through J? This, A through J?
So moved.
Commissioner Space, any second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Number 14 is our financials. We have two. Uh, our first is A, which Number 14 is our financials. We have two. Our first is A, which is the payments of Bills List A from February 8th of 2023. I get a motion to pay the Bills List A. Commissioner Yardley?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia's second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Our second financials, Resolution B, payments of Bills List B from February 8th, 2023. And from what I understand, Mr. Space will abstain. Can I get a motion to pay the Bills List B?
Aye.
Mr. Yardley, I get second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Number 15 is personnel. There is none. Number 17 is our administrative report.
Thank you, sir. Just to reiterate, reiterate what the Commissioner Director said about the ARPA money, the resolution, thank you for approving tonight, approved almost $300,000 worth of reimbursements for the first wave, which is remarkable how little it's been issued. And that covers 11 different municipalities. So I think as a first run, that was, it's a pretty good, you know, area of, of reimbursements, and it, and it ranges from a wide variety of different types of businesses. My message to everybody in the public and to, to the council, if you know anybody that thinks they might be eligible, have them go through the application process. It doesn't cost a dime. And Solix, our company that's handling this, is very responsive. So they'll tell you very quickly if there's documentations you need, or if you don't meet the requirements for whatever reason, or your application looks like it's going to go. I just, it doesn't take long just to go through it. And I highly recommend everybody does that. The last meeting, I know, I made a comment about the regionalization of courts and the counties as the pilot of the northern area. We're scheduling another meeting in another two weeks. Seven municipalities have at least raised their hands and said we're interested in looking into this. Several mayors have called since then and asking about specific issues with the law and how it applies to their local municipalities and coverages of such, of that nature. So we'll continue those conversations and then, and keep you abreast of those things that come along. We will have another update meeting tomorrow afternoon at the 911 center. I know all of you are aware that we had quite a crisis over the weekends with frozen pipes and destructions of the offices there. We're going to have another meeting tomorrow, and I'll update all of you again on the progress of how that's going and the remediations that are going out to get the center back up and going. The 911 center is completely operational. The dispatch part of it is completely operational. It's the front OEM building that took the most of the damage. I have to, hats off, the kudos off to the OEM group in being able to immediately dispatch in our, in our, off, what we call our hotspot. They would, had no breakage in the 911 service at all, and was able to transfer the dispatching into High Street, and while we got the 911 center back up and running. So that was a very good process that worked very well. Tomorrow, Lorraine and I will be representing the, the county in our statewide reorganization meeting and re-up meeting tomorrow at lunch. And then Friday, I have a meeting with Dr. Conley to go over all of the, all the recommendations and/or openings for trustees and a selection committee and get our arms around that. That's been kind of a loose process here in the last couple months. So we finally got reorganized here in the administration center. I have an administrative assistant that's got our arms around that very well. So we're going to meet with Dr. Conley and make sure we got everything in that under, under wraps. And I think that's about it. Other than one more comment I want to say about Jennifer. Only 20%, I want to make this known, only 20% or less passed the test the first time. I, I failed to say that in the last comment. So that's it.
Very good. Thank you much. Number 18 is county council report.
Thank you, Director. Not much tonight. A couple things. If you recall, there was a suit against the county by the former county council, made some pretty slanderous allegations against several members of this board. As we discussed with all of you, it was really more of a political statement than it was anything meritoriously legal. It was dismissed unceremoniously by the court, who found that the commission did exactly what it was authorized to do. The, the term of a, of the county council is three years by statute, and you operated entirely within the confines of the law. The, the court in dismissing it was very direct in its rebuttal of Mr. Kelly's allegations against this board. So congratulations to you guys on that front. Mr. Kelly is appealing, but I don't expect that it will go anywhere. I'll let you know what I hear about that next. Andover Subacute, we have submitted two updated Oprah requests to the State Department of Health requesting, again, all the information with respect to the entity formerly known as Andover Subacute during the COVID-19 public health emergency. The Department of Health has provided Sussex County with several hundred pages of documents in response to our lawsuits. We've reviewed the documents and, and can tell you that they are incomplete and deficient on nearly every front. We have advised the state of our objections. They provided a second pile of papers, which, no surprise, continue to not include the things that we've requested, most notably the email exchanges between the state and Andover Subacute and Woodland. We still have several outstanding communications remaining from them. Regarding the two lawsuits already penned, and on that front, a list of the terms has been submitted to the DOH. We're still waiting for their reply. Based on the DOH's representations to the judge on January 26th, the responses to those requests should be forthcoming as of this afternoon. Before I drove up here, Director, they still hadn't been provided. So I'll be letting the court know again, probably later this week. Regarding the two lawsuits already pending against the Department of Health, they were consolidated by the court into a single action, and the department is pending a hearing. In the direction of the Board of Commissioners, we continue to press the state for transparency, which I appreciate, as I'm sure your residents do, to disclose all the relevant documents. It has been a painstaking process, and they have bucked your attempts at nearly every turn. So that's really all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Number 19 is unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business? Okay. Number 20, is there any new business?
Yes.
Any new business? All right. Well, let's get to it. Number 21 is the public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone, state your name and municipality for the record. I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner Yardley, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain. Pass. You are up.
Hello. My name is Helen O'Shea, and I live in Vernon. Good evening, Mr. Tappan and county commissioners. First, I would like to start with acknowledging the proclamation given to the Office of Public Health Nurses. We are proud to be part of their team. I would like to set the tone for the comment section of this meeting. Many of the employees live, work, and play in Sussex County. Although I am sure you already know these statistics, I think it is important to reiterate this information to you and the taxpayers here in Sussex County. With that being said, we want to serve the people in this county. There is a phrase, a phrase that says, if you don't like it, just leave. That is hard to do when you are invested in helping our community with the services that they so desperately need. If we all left, who would be here to pick up the phone of a family in our county that needs our assistance? Here are some talks, speaking points that I would like to be shared. As a registered professional nurse, a degree is required and is costly. Several nurses have returned to school to earn a BSN degree in order to meet job qualifications at the county and civil service titles. These nurses have student loans that need to be repaid. The salaries for the degrees required does not align with the cost of the encumbered loan debt. Some Sussex County nurses are compensated at a rate of $12,000 to $15,000 less than our counterparts in Warren County, and they have the same qualifications. Number two, many employees need to work second jobs to compensate for the low rate of pay of the county. Number three, the base salary at the county for a registered nurse that is a single mother of two is eligible for some state programs at a rate of just 250 above the poverty level. Part-time employees that do not receive benefits need to be compensated at a higher hourly late rate. Part-time employees who are scheduled to work on Monday to Friday hours do not receive compensation above their hourly rate for hours worked on the weekend, and should receive weekend differential. There is a need to attend outreachers so taxpayers can connect with the person who has the most expertise in their program. Many of our community members require assistance finding services that may otherwise go unused. These events often occur at night and on weekends. Our children are receiving an excellent education here in Sussex County, and many are going on to earn higher degrees. But they can't afford to work in Sussex County because the pay is so poor. We are educating our young, but the taxpayers are not benefiting for their expertise. Can you finish?
Would you, and I don't mean to cut you off, and she can go and read the rest of your statement, but maybe when you guys are done, maybe can leave that with us? Would that be all right?
Certainly.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Helen Ann Keenan. I'm from Vernon.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat?
I'm Helen Ann Keenan from Vernon. A majority of staff have significant others that commute to other counties and New York City for employment. On a side note, a big shout out to the road department for keeping our roads possible and therefore allowing taxpayers to get to work, school, et cetera. How long will this be sustainable, with those on the road crew continuing to leave for increased wages? The good work that is provided to our county is done so in a professional, proficient, and timely manner, and our coworkers strive for excellence. We are thankful for all employees and their contributions to our working relationships. We understand that the county has many different parts to make it work. Compensation for these services needs to be reviewed and adjusted accordingly. We love serving the residents of Sussex County, but we need a salary that will be conducive with providing for our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You mind if I have a... Much to court. Be careful. Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Masnigetti, Andover Township, Sussex County DPW. I want to thank everyone for the compliments. My department, we do strive for excellence. Anyhow, I just have one quick thing I want to say tonight. All the time I hear from your side of the aisle, do more with less. I think it's your turn to start doing more with less and return the favor on our side of the lines.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, which one? Does it matter?
It's recording it, that's all.
All right, great.
Could you just say your name and township, please?
Great. Ken Collins from Andover. I wish I didn't have to be here for this purpose tonight, but there's something wrong going on in our community, in your community, that I think we can all agree needs to stop, because it's just juvenile and ridiculous. I'm here tonight because it's in your power to stop it. And I think we can all agree that we want Sussex County to be perceived as a warm and welcoming place to live for everyone who wants to live here. And I think if people were considering moving here from somewhere else, they might go online and search around for things about Sussex County. And what I brought here for you to look at tonight is something that they can look at that's online for them to see about Sussex County. We wouldn't want anyone to think that Sussex County was a bad place for them to live because they're lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender, right? I think we can all agree on that. And I'm asking you tonight to denounce this and the website that posted it, which is called the Real Sussex County Informer on Facebook publicly right now. The content of that website, to the best of my knowledge, is published by Joseph LaBarbera, Steve Salvagio, and Commissioner Hayden, and it needs to stop. This is disgusting. And if this is the way people who represent our, our county are going to represent it online, they need to not be in office. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it. Thanks for calling. That's not what this board does. You can make your comment. You know, if you're going to make allegations specifically against members of the board, I mean, I hope you can defend them. But that's not what this board does. You can make your comment, they don't take action.
Counsel, may I make comment real quick?
I, I would recommend...
For one, I'm not part of this website, okay? And also, we would be restricting a First Amendment site.
Understood. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else from the public?
Seeing none, I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business. Commissioner Space, I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Fantasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain. Pass. All right. 22 is reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Number 23 is adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hayden?
Second.
Commissioner Space, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain. Pass. Meeting is done.